Alderman Angel, Alderman Foreman.
Yes.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Magley.
Yes.
Alderman Simmons, present, Alderman Wilkins.
Present.
Alright, we have a call sign. Is it turning into place?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the reason for the special call meeting, authorizing change order number one for Switzer Street project. Let me see if I can explain this, please.
I'll try. We have a design for reconstruction with eight inches of concrete for Switzer Street. It does work, but in fact, when you get out in the field and you look at the result, they compare it to what the elevations are gonna be looking at top of curb versus the adjacent property, several adjacent properties. Plastic slopes because the yards are much lower than what the street is going to be even though the street actually does come down even in these planes.
It's coming down, but the curb was already so buried as the biggest, it's making it more noticeable.
In that case, Alderman Magley, Alderman Lee, Alderman Foreman came up, looked at it. We brought this engineer back. She has prepared some alternative designs. Phil has spent quite a bit of time potting to make sure that we can physically accommodate those designs. She was getting down about as far as she could compared to where we thought the waterline was in particular to get storm sewer across the street that matched the curb in better and not conflict with the middle of the waterline was very, very difficult. And she came up with the design that is lower. Requires us to go in and take out two boxes that Phil did down by the Quonset Cut, lower them and lower quite a bit of, about extra eighty feet storm sewer, which we didn't know was gonna be there. It had a bearing on the, kind of Christine did, but it's been installed and will need to be taken out, reinstalled, but that's all plastic, HDP. And so it's a matter of labor and not materials in order to accommodate Mr. Brooks' rec center. She came up with a plan. She came up with an alternative plan that's even lower, but required an addition of more storm sewer, was two additional blocks, which yields a lower street profile adjacent to the yards that are really the worst yards. We think will not be in conflict with the waterline.
We will be in conflict on the second option, the storm sewer where it extends up a stone, we will be in conflict with the water main up there, getting across the road.
This morning?
This afternoon, after I talked to her and everything, I'd say that was gonna be in the way.
That's the line?
That's the main one going down Swizzler.
Right down the middle of the street.
If we extend it on up to stone, where we come across, well, that'll have to be relocated.
Cause it's in the, in the same ditch, basically.
When we cross it, it'll be right like right in the middle of us.
I just think we probably thought we were running parallel.
We're gonna cross the road. We're gonna put it along the other side.
We're gonna cross the road.
Yeah. So best I can figure, we're gonna hit it, there's just no way over or around it.
And we've determined that the sewer taps to the likely conflicts with two houses are not a problem, but you could not locate.
The, yeah, water guys couldn't find that one, I don't know where, I mean, it could've came on the other side of the house or somewhere. They sucked out a pretty good area whenever they find it. But the other one that was on the same block was underneath it by a good amount, so, but that's, their thinking's probably underneath the water main.
We know.
Yeah.
On determining that there was consensus among several Aldermen that they wanted to do something different. The contractor was asked to pull off the project until we could make a decision. And Christine, when she arrived at the options that she did, went back to the contractor and asked what it cost us to do X and to do Y. I had great fears that we would get stuck. Change orders are never things that turn out well for the contractee, right, opposed to contractor, but they did. They treated us right, they didn't.
Yeah, and he says, I mean, even he agreed it's gonna, it's not like a big change, you know, it's.
It's taking out.
Yeah, it's just gonna take a little longer, a little more excavated.
They had gotten to final grade for about three quarters of the.
Block, well, they had rock on block and a half of it.
Right. The excavation was done, everything except between the Quonset and our Burton, so they'll have to come down either a little bit, eight inches or whatever that design is, it's not a constant amount, or that plus a little bit more under option two, which gets closer to the grades of the lowest part of where this houses and the chance computer building are. Nominally, most of the area around Switzer drains away from the street theoretically, it's very flat, but theoretically, the computer building and Napa and all of those go down to Pub Street and theoretically, everything on that street drains north, but drains through some backyards and those are very low houses. If I was building a new house, I'd build, I'd add about three or four foot of filler cause it's not pretty good anyway.
So what's the, what's your recommendation?
I have a drawing here, okay, kinda details the difference.
She sent it out?
Yeah. Option one.
Why don't you come around?
What we looked at, option one was to, we've got a low point here regarding, that was already there, so there's boxes across there.
And that's the east street?
This is Swizzler.
Okay.
And what we decided to do was to make another low point here, which makes those grades much, much better. So, because we already had a box at this point because of coming from here and breaking the line, so if we came across here, we could make this a low point and we could put a high point in between, which there was, but now instead of just going gradually down, it goes back down and then back up a little bit, which relieves quite a bit of what's, that would allow us to take about a foot and a half, well, a little over a foot in front of Larry's house. Because right now, he's looking, if you put it in the way the design is, he's looking at about the curb, looking out his windows.
Wow.
This will lower that a foot, it probably makes it no worse than what it was before. We can't lower it much, lower than that. But we can cut the top of this box off, we can cut the top of these two boxes off, he'll drill into the side of the catch basin here to extend this one across.
There's not a box here, right?
There's not a box, that's.
We'll have to add that box.
The second thing, and that's the first option, and it would carry then this grade, whatever we drop this, which we were looking at eight inches, it would carry that grade all the way up to the new high point up here. The second option we looked at, Phil and I talked about, is we could run up here and put another box in up here. We were hoping it would be a twelve inch line, but it turned out to be a fifteen, and the reason is because you're carrying, all this water was coming down to here before, well, we're now intercepting it at this point, so you're still gonna end up with a fifteen inch pipe there. Here's where he's talking about hitting that water line is where this would come across the street at this point. So, I mean, that, that becomes the only issue. Mike, I talked to Mike this afternoon, he wasn't concerned about the water line, other, but that was before, I think he found out about this other also. This was the only, this becomes the only issue, and it's, it's the question now, do we choose option one or option two? I still like this option, because it, that puts us up here at the computer building, which is right here. With option one, we're still about eight inches above the existing grades out here, eight or nine inches. If we choose option two, we're about two or three inches above the grades there, which is much, much more doable. Now, you gotta realize, this is extremely flat between the building and here.
It extended, drains, it drains towards.
Yeah, it drains this way.
Yeah, there's a culvert that comes across here that all drains in here.
So, but option two gets the grades down to about two or three inches above what's here, and it will blend in much better. It also helps us on these houses over here, which this one is, was helped before by eight inches, it would help it by fourteen inches now. And the grades become much, much more platable to where those houses are. And, and as you go up here, now you get into a place up here, there's nothing we can do right in this area. We're going to be above the existing grades there by a considerable amount.
Am I correct in saying, none of those yards will drain to the streets?
We don't think that they do, there's hopefully, it's hard to tell where they drain.
That's being you talking about taking this curb out.
Yeah, if we took the curb out at this point, then we could match very close to what the existing concrete in there was. Now, I don't really like that idea, but at the same token, it would help, otherwise we've got a curb standing up in there that's gonna be well above what the, what his concrete back here in front of his building is. It might be easier just to take the curb out and.
Cause if you put that curb in, you're gonna have to tear all this concrete out, up to his, up to his storage to get it to drink.
Now, the only thing, bad thing about taking it out is the water's draining down this gutter, but if we intercept it here, there's very little to worry about at that point. So it doesn't become an issue, and that allows us to match these grades right here, but I'm not sure we can take the curb out if we don't put this other box in. If we, and we can take it out though if we put this box in without any real problem, because we've intercepted the majority of the water. Otherwise, it'll end up, the water will come down that street and it will be slightly higher than his, all that water's gonna flow off the street into his, and that's what we don't want, we have to have a curb there at that point. If we do, if we put this box here, there's very, very little water, so it becomes not much of a problem at all.
Okay. When, that was an operating auto parts store, there's a roll curb and the property owner built it in with sand and just created his own head on parking for about four spaces.
Right.
You take out the curb, and if it ever becomes a functional business again, the same thing's gonna happen.
Right. And that's just true, but I think there's enough room there that is not a real problem. I, I would rather leave the curb there, but it looks, it's gonna look really bad with the existing concrete otherwise.
I have a question. Adding that box in, what is the cost going to be for adding that box in, and will that be offset by not having the curb?
It won't completely be offset, but it's, it's costs that will absorb in, will gain a little bit from the contractor on that. This is Phil's cost and the city's cost, I mean, it's Phil's time and the cost of the pipe for the city.
The design is for curb in better and the street to be poured at the same time, it's not like they go in and pour curb in better with the squeegee machine and then do the travel lines.
So they were gonna do it all at once?
So actually, you probably don't.
They may do half and half, or they may do the whole thing, but it's not gonna be four pours.
You're really not gonna get anything from the contractor to speak of, cause he'll probably pour that curb and then knock it off.
Now, one thing we might, we might still get.
I mean.
With a machine, if he pours it with a machine. Now, if he pours it by hand, he'll, you won't see.
Yeah, if he pours it with a machine, he's gonna pour the curb and then knock it out. But if they pour it by hand, they'll never pour that piece.
No, never pour that piece, we'll get a little bit of savings from the contractor on that, maybe, but not much.
There is one potential savings. They've gone through the place where I thought we might.
Oh, so they're gonna break the curb?
Paper and curb, paper curb and road all at the same time, he said.
So far, we have not had any places where they've had base that with, we have not had some base that with the proper base inspection, they've had to use the.
Right, so there's a little over three thousand dollars.
Three thousand four hundred.
The contractor didn't wanna take that out, because when we lower this, we might run into some, but we've already checked most of the areas, if there's any area that we're gonna hit, it's probably going to be up in this area. And it won't be.
I was a little skeptical.
Here.
It looked like kind of a scuzzy place there.
But they're gonna take off another foot probably better, so we'll, yeah, we'll get a better look at it.
So, we may end up with a little bit of geotextile in there, but chances are, we're going to get three thousand dollars or close to three thousand dollars of savings from that point.
But we on the geo right now, right?
Um, I'm not sure.
Do we have enough to do?
I actually got some left over from Miles Street.
This one's saying, do we have enough if we run into?
Depends on how, I don't know how much's left on that roll, I bought a roll to do all of Miles ditch, when it got muddy, muddy part of it, but we ended up using all of it.
So we may end up having enough if the contractor will, we'll get the full three, four hundred dollars.
Well, he is, when we do the other side of the street from Miles Street ditch. Mostly, this is a matter of appearances. And if you're gonna do the full, then it probably makes sense to go ahead with option two also.
I'm thinking that.
I mean, it, there's nine thousand dollars difference between option one and option two. That's not enough, cause I'm all excited, I'd rather go with option two at that point.
We need to fix it right, we need.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna do it, we might as well do it right.
That's it, the first one being option one, we called them option one, option two, not the first one. We're changing to the other option, to the deepest option, which would be this one.
Okay, that cost would be the port from Cannon, which is thirty-four thousand and four dollars, plus cost of the pipe to go down and.
I'll have to get prices because the cover's not gonna be enough plastic, cause we're gonna use concrete pipe and all of it.
And that is two inches worth of depth?
Not really, it's, your, your plastic pipe is.
The plastic pipe is, there not gonna be enough cover on the top of it, by the time they get all the top.
I know, but the walls are thicker for concrete, so.
Not, no, no.
Not, not enough on that size?
Not enough on, uh, plastic pipe, it should fairly affect wall, because it's got those corrugations to it.
We have the pipe down at Pratt Street. You're gonna have to.
Yeah, that'll have to be tore out, the plastic will be, something will save, but the concrete will be gone.
We have to buy a couple extra.
There are just three pieces down there.
You have enough on hand that.
Yeah, sell me three, three twelves and about a hundred and thirty feet of fifteen.
And you got prices for those?
I'll have to get it on, on from that, cause I didn't get, she didn't get, called me back before I got off work to find out, but ECO's the only place I can get, get the concrete pipe, everybody else just does pretty cash stuff, boxes and stuff, unless you know somebody else, ECO's the only one that.
ECO's the only one I know of.
That's the only person, the only ones I could find last time that can even sell it, so.
You can get it out of San Luis, but it costs you more to ship it than it would for us.
And so, we're talking six, hundred sixty? What was the total measure?
It'd be about thirty feet of concrete and, yeah, about a hundred and sixty total.
Hundred sixty foot?
Yeah, ballpark.
And you have two prices for the?
The cutting, yeah, lane and.
Well, we need to, we need to figure out till we can, yeah, so we can get an exact estimate of what. Right now, I had in three boxes, what did they, one drill hole?
One hole?
One hole was.
About thousand?
Just shy of a thousand bucks.
And, and the company I talked to is almost the exact same, so.
And one, one of our hole, the hole of Lan, uh, Lan and you told me was a hundred seventy or something?
Yeah, a hundred seventy.
So we're looking at about eleven hundred dollars or so, a little less maybe.
Call me in two days and I'll be here.
Yeah, okay.
Company I talked to made it a week, so I mean, his is a little bit quicker.
I would think we'd go with quicker.
Yeah.
And the ones in Plumpy are the ones that Jeff said, the Plumpy one, which I said they give you a little bit quicker.
Yeah.
Mike is wanting to prefer us to deal with in the future anyway.
It's not local, it's okay, unfortunately.
So.
If you approve either of these, we will have to, well, quickly, because I've already been getting some calls from a few people, and they made a lot of letter saying that we have a revised time schedule.
Christine has set up a meeting.
We're lucky it's gonna be dry.
For tomorrow morning, at nine thirty with Bill and Mike and Mike Cannon, who's contractor.
Yes, Mike's.
So they're, they're gonna meet tomorrow morning, cause they knew we were gonna do something. So they'll meet tomorrow and then the contractor will get back to work. He is asking for, what is it, twenty days of contract, which is not unreasonable.
Yeah, basically, we're gonna get, get over there and say, figure out who's doing what and when we can all get in there together, so.
Well, he's not pulled out, then?
Yeah, he's not on the.
He had hooked up and making, so he just ran up there, not working on that while, while hold.
Cause I seen a little track over there.
Yeah, now, he's planning on bringing everything back in a few days, he said, but we're gonna meet in the morning and figure out exactly when he needs to come back, if it's even worth it, maybe just wait till I get done, that one in, and he can come back in and just start down that end and work his way back up or something.
Cause the biggest holdup will be Phil redoing the storm sewer, and we'll have to have.
While Mike's working on that, that will give Mike the time to work.
Yeah.
Probably, no, he doesn't wanna go over the top.
Right.
Sound like, need a motion to accept one of these proposals?
I move we accept proposal number two for thirty-four thousand four dollars.
Second?
I motion second to accept the second proposal for thirty-four thousand four dollars, all those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Do we need the roll call?
Um, no.
Okay.
That one or this?
Okay.
Well, all votes should be roll call, unless you could sue something like, the vote was unanimous. If there's dissent, you gotta identify who was dissenting.
Okay, any names?
Second thing to request then is give Phil the okay to go ahead and go with the per, the firm that can do it the fastest, cause there's no sort of a price difference, and to order concrete pipe from ECO, if there's no alternatives.
So.
Second. And the concrete pipe, the concrete call for two, right?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
ECO, yeah.
ECO.
All right.
And then that covers a hundred thirty foot of pipe?
Yes.
I motion second to accept the pipe from ECO?
Yeah.
All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll get a price and let you know tomorrow then, I'll get all of it, we'll get it ordered.
And if it doesn't hold off the front check.
Yeah, I'll wait and cater for them tomorrow.
Okay.
I move we adjourn.
I know there's no as they arise or anything on the agenda, but I haven't had my rights. You all got the email about the governor's gonna be in town Thursday afternoon, and is to discuss his veto of the House bill two fifty-three? Has anybody had a chance to read that? I'll have to look that a little bit.
I looked at it, I think it's pretty long, too.
Okay, I got an email back, I responded to the governor's office, saying I was gonna be there at noon, and she sent me an email back requesting information if the board or the chamber of commerce was gonna take any, any type of a.
Public stand.
Public stand, yeah. And so, that's what I'm asking.
Well, the chamber's not, because there's not a meeting between now.
Right, I know the chamber won't, but do we wanna take any type of a stand on this bill?
I'm not sure that we do. I'm, I'm not in favor.
Well, they did not.
I'm not in favor of overriding the veto, because I think it's adversely affect our schools, but I'm not necessarily in favor of making a public statement here. I don't think it's necessary.
I think the timing is too short for us to have formulated an opinion.
It was.
To answer this evening, one way or another, other than what I've read, I'm not in favor of overriding the veto. And I plan on being at Thursday's meeting, but I need to do some more research.
No, I just, I find it odd that the governor of Texas is trying to, you know, recruit businesses, I mean, it's, you know, because of the governor's veto's bill, it's causing the post HD recruit businesses, I'm sorry.
I will take a stance against the Texas governor.
I mean, you gotta realize, the veto override, all the advertising for that is being paid for by Roy Singfeld.
Braxton.
Rex Singfeld, and he's the one that has put up several of these initiatives, campaigns recently that is trying to limit what governments can do and what governments can collect in money, which will adversely affect local or small municipalities too.
Do you know the MML?
The MML is.
I'm against.
Yes.
Against? Yes, that was, that was.
It's a N E not.
That was why Dan Ross sent, sent me the one that I passed along to you folks.
Okay.
And I do have a, as name right, I'm sorry, I have a constituent stop by my house this evening and asked that we address the city taking debit card payments.
So far, the recommendation of staff is no, because there's no way we can do that without incurring a surcharge from the companies that handle the cards.
Is it?
We would lose three or four percent on every person that paid the bill.
I was asking, and I told him we had visited this, and that there would be a surcharge, and that was going to be passed on to the consumer.
Well, I'm not sure you can do that.
Well, you can, because people have done it, that's the only way I'd be in favor of accepting a debit card, yeah.
And he just.
See, because I don't see us in Korea, what that cost.
What's, what's the, the automatic bank grab fees?
A C H.
That doesn't cost anything. It's small fee, it's eight cents per transaction.
Okay.
There's a two dollar filing fee per file that we send through, I mean.
At least in.
That's one time.
It's like that, two or three times.
In that case, we can handle electronically, we can post it to our software electronically, so there is a commensurate savings in labor.
Right.
We have fewer chances of mistakes, so it pays for itself, but three or four percent on the bill.
But you.
That, that, well, his, his complaint came about, or his question came about, because he came by to put his check in the overnight deposit box, and the sign was up, you have to come in, pay your bill, and he didn't like that.
Well, if it's paid on time, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna go there.
If he came by and that was on the box, that means he had already missed the bid line.
Exactly.
Right, right. Ha!
I mean, we don't put that across the face of it until somebody is late and they have the turn on, turn off charges and all that.
Right, and we had to start doing that, because we have had some customers that would drop it in the box and then come in and tell us that they had it in the box before we sent our list out for disconnects, whenever Donna routinely checks it before we send any of the crews out.
Thoroughly checks it.
She thoroughly checks it, she goes outside, considering in the wrong, you know, in the other way, we double check, we have another person standing on the inside, very thoroughly try to check it, so they started putting that sticker on there so that people wouldn't just drop it in the box, and they would actually have to come in, and so that we knew that they did it after the fact.
I mean, if we can, if it can be investigated and there's a way for us to put a surcharge on them for the fee that it could be cost, then I have no objection to doing so, but if we can't do that, then I'm not in favor of us absorbing that.
If you're willing to stretch this out a bit, out the first of the year, we will rebid banking services, the three year cycle, we can ask for a vote, we'll see if anything's changed from the bank, banks, whoever offers the best deal upon having an account.
I mean, by the same token, I have no problem with them using a credit card either, if they absorb the charges rather than us absorbing those.
That's what the county does, but as I understand it, there's special legislation or regulations that allow for property tax that to be done, or ordinary commercial accounts to which utilities are, it's matter of practice of the people who do the cards, and they definitely get off their money.
I just wanted it on record that I was making the request on his behalf, and I can tell him that it will be addressed in the future. It has been, it has been put forth to the council, and it will be addressed in the future.
In approximately seven months.
All right.
But he'll know.
Oh, yes.
This is talking about under item three A, obviously.
Well, I asked Merritt, Merritt said if something come up like what she just said, constituent, or things that we couldn't have known about when we sent out the agenda, that that agendas are tentative and can be modified.
Okay.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
A motion to second we adjourn, all in favor of that?
Aye.
I oppose.